I'll let Mary get ahead. Should I announce a joint meeting?
No, it's not a joint meeting. It's just an agenda item on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me, please? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We have two, Mayor. We'd like to pull number 6.2. That was Councilman Ramirez's future agenda item. So we'd like to pull that item and then also move 6.1 to after citizens' comments.
Okay. The councils, can I have a vote on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Has it changed?
As changed, yes, with the changes.
I guess I'm next to make a motion to second, I guess. I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Horn.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Atkinson. Mayor Ramsey.
I also vote aye. Okay, we have number two, awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamations. We have none. Citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public when addressed... I'm sorry. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Our city clerk will be doing the timing today, so we've got a little clock here on citizens' comments. So if you hear something real loud, it's gonna... you're gonna jump, so... Mary?
Good evening, council. Mary Jones, District 1. This is not a new thing, but I've... and I've talked to people behind the scenes about this, but I've decided to make a big deal about it. The door of the city hall has an automatic opening opener to make it ADA compliant. That was done after Melanie requested that. For more than a year, that door has been non-functional with exceptions, maybe one or twice. This week I came to make a payment or to do some business with the city hall, and I could not open the door. I had to wait out there until someone would come open the door. It is not compliant, and I feel like it's not a priority. No company that you have a contract with should be allowed to have something so important and yet so non-functional. At the end of the meeting, I have to wait for someone to open the door for me again. It makes me feel like a little kid. Not only that, I physically can't do it, so I'd have to bust out somewhere, some other way. Or, I don't know. But it needs to be compliant. And you're just really lucky that no one has filed a formal complaint, because you're looking at a big fine if it's not fixed. So, in the spirit of friendly happiness and joy, please take care of that.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else? Bill?
Sorry.
Bill Lewis, Madison Street. Since you pulled 6.2, that I can talk about it in citizen comments. So, I'm getting... I'm a little concerned because when we announced no front lawn watering... And by the way, I don't have a lawn, so I'm not... I have no skin in the game. When we announced no front lawn watering, a lot of people complied. A lot of people didn't comply. And at this point, it looks like it's been a month. My neighbors have... some of my neighbors have their lawn is dead. One installed a sprinkler system and a new lawn, and it's all gone now. So I think it's really kind of a breach of faith that when people complied with the emergency dictate and then now there's talk about, oh, well, maybe you're gonna reverse it. I think people are gonna be upset, and they're gonna wonder what you're gonna say to them when they have complied and not defied the law. So I think it's a tough thing to do. And I don't know how much water we're gonna save. Maybe it's just a little bit. But the point is, those that stopped watering their front lawns are suffering now. And if we have to pay lots of money to get extra water, those who complied are paying for the lawns that the other people didn't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Nathan?
I'm in a hurry before she starts that thing again. Nathan, from District 3, and to segue on what Bill said, we're also gonna be paying for the construction companies that are watering in order to compact. And so they use our water, and then when we're out, they buy that water at the price that, you know, the regular residents play. And then when we're out of water, the residents are gonna be stuck paying an extreme amount for water where these construction companies won't be. That's horrible. It's irresponsible. On August 23rd, Planning Commission had concerns about the drought in parking over an item that was with, you know, over on Cedar Street with some new buildings that were coming in. And they offered to table it until they got more information. And then council brought a resolution 4115 to be the most business-friendly city in California and buried in that resolution, rather than being transparent with the public and saying, nope, we're gonna push. We're gonna push for growth even if the citizens can't have water. They buried it into this resolution that's basically stated that they're gonna move forward with it. And then they brought that resolution to the Planning Commission and used that as ammo to get planning commissioners on board with that, which I got no problem with that. Just be honest. Just be open and honest and tell people what you're doing. I think it's not transparent when you hide things in the middle of a resolution that's stated to be the most business-friendly. It should have been stated that, hey, we're gonna use the water for development while you guys are gonna let your water... let your front lawns die. So... One item that I wanted to also talk about was the block grant program, number 5.5. I find it amazing that none of the businesses took advantage of that. So I would look at that and find out why, because there was a ton of businesses that could have used that money. And I remember when this came around, I looked at that and I said to myself, I bet you people aren't gonna be able to qualify for that. And so if that's the case, I would suggest trying to figure out how to make that available so that people could qualify rather than just giving the money to self-help or housing agencies or whatnot. But I want to tell you, I appreciate the Planning Commission. They did a lot of hard work and really delved through the water issues. And here's the thing. We keep hearing over and over again, this water is for public health and safety. How do we extend that to building development? I don't understand. It doesn't even make sense. So like, we keep hearing, you know, state hospital won't conserve, it falls on the residents. Commercial won't conserve, it falls on the residents. And now we hear development is gonna continue, so that falls on the residents. I tell you, when I get up there, it ain't gonna fall on the residents. I'm gonna fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there any... Mary?
I apologize. This is a thing I had planned to mention in the first place, but I got stuck outside. So I have had more than one person who works out of the state prison say that there is water that is being mismanaged because of leaking sprinklers, other things like that. And I was wondering if the city has any ability to audit their water use? Just to visual, a couple of visits to say, this needs to be fixed, please take care of that. This is being done at the wrong time, whatever. Because these people that talked to me said that there is a lot of perceived waste. Maybe it's not that much water, but in what they see, they say that it seems like it's a lot of water and it's worth addressing. So I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but just think about that. And the same is true at the mental hospital.
Thank you. Yes, miss?
My name is Norae Eldridge. Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Always reminds me of hard-boiled eggs. It does. Boy, are those good in the summer.
It's a timer.
I just have one request. I'd like for you guys to either remove or replace the flag over this building. Thank you.
It was just done two days ago. We actually just had it replaced. Yes, it's brand new.
Can you restate your name for the record, please? I'm sorry.
It's Norae Eldridge.
Thank you.
It's Nora, but different, just an E on the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Nora. Anybody else? Okay, next, we'll go to... We're gonna move item number 6.1 up. Housing Element Kickoff Study Session with a Joint Planning Commission and City Discussion. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the initial kind of joint kickoff workshop to kind of get an introduction to the six-cycle housing element process. As the council recalls, we executed a contract and we're involved in the multi-jurisdictional housing element with all of the other jurisdictions in Fresno County, minus, I think, Clovis and Fresno, in terms of looking at an equitable way to get through this mandate element in the general plan. And so tonight, we have Clancy Taylor with the California Coalition of Rural Housing, who is part of the consulting team with Placeworks, who is going kind of on a road show doing these initial workshops and then also talk about the public workshop that'll occur in October. And so tonight will be kind of a joint discussion. We'll have a presentation from Ms. Taylor, and then from there, it'll open it up for any questions or discussion that the council or the commission may have regarding the process and what to expect. And then as we go through that process, the council and the commission will be apprised of it. Just like any other kind of rezone or general plan amendment, this project will go through kind of a review process, environmental process, and then go to Planning Commission for recommendation to council for approval subsequently. And there'll be some schedules and timelines that'll be identified in the presentation. So with that, I'll have Clancy come up, and then if you guys have any questions of myself or Clancy or the process, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Thank you all for letting me be here today. My name's Clancy Taylor. I am with the California Coalition for Rural Housing. I will try not to bore you, because I know this stuff can get tedious. So, we're kicking off the study session for the multi-jurisdictional housing element. So, all right, if I can figure out how this thing works, we'll get going. Any help where pointed?
Is that a switch, Larry?
Yeah, there's a left and right button. You can just aim forward. It's fine. Is it not working?
It's not, but...
How about now?
Okay.
He'll be out and fix it in a sec.
Thank you. Okay, that's... That's the big bucks, folks. That's why he makes the big bucks. All right. Let me do really brief introductions. There's a whole team behind doing this effort. Then we'll move into what is the housing element, a little bit of the contents, what's going on. Then move into the RENA, which I'm sure council has perhaps heard about, the regional housing needs allocation. And then last, get into the fun changes to our state housing law. So, there's a whole big project team. Starts up with Fresno COG with Christine Kai and Simran Juti. This consultant team is led by Jennifer Gastelum and Placeworks, and Cynthia Walsh is the project manager for Colinga. And I am being brought on for the community engagement efforts. This, and then we'll have a subsequent community workshop. All right. So the objective, to provide an overview of the housing element, update process and all those fun new laws, share some information about what to expect in the process and the schedule, and then gather some initial input on potential housing issues and opportunities from the folks in the room. So, housing element overview. What is it? It is one of the eight mandated elements of the general plan here in the state of California. It must be updated every eight years. So if you've been around a little bit, maybe you've heard of it. So we're in the sixth cycle. The city must adopt this housing element by December 31st, 2023. And yes, this seems very far away. However, there's a lot of steps to this process, and it'll be here before we know it. So, the housing element helps plan to accommodate the jurisdiction's fair share of the regional housing need. All right. So what does it do? It helps plan housing for all economic segments of the community. It must have adequate zoning to meet the housing needs, and it must include goals and policies to ensure the jurisdiction meets those goals. What a housing element does not and will not ever do, it does not require the city or the county to actually build these units. It does not provide funding for the units, and it doesn't approve any project whatsoever. Essentially, what a housing element will do is lay the foundation for a developer to comment and say, oh, what have you with a project. So what is in it? As Sean mentioned, we're doing a regional effort. So we'll have some regional sections that cover all of Fresno County. Intro, a little bit of info on what's going on in the county, the demographics, the needs of the housing, what's going on. Then move into a county-wide assessment of fair housing. And this is a new section brought on by one of the new state laws. So it includes a regional approach to addressing the new state bill, Assembly Bill 686. And then it covers county-wide goals and policies, and then a summary of sites, identifying sites where housing could potentially be built. And I'll tell you, the local section will look a lot like that regional section, but it's gonna only be for Colinga. So you got the housing needs assessment. You got your local fair housing assessment. Moving into your sites inventory, your analysis of resources, what's going on here in the city specifically. And then you move into local housing constraints. Are there policies in place currently, either at the county or at the city level, that could impede housing? Then you have local implementation programs, suggestions, jurisdiction-specific programs to be carried out throughout the eight-year process. And then lastly, this also includes an evaluation of the previous housing element. So what has been done that fifth cycle, went through this process eight years ago? What has happened since that? And then moving forward. So a timeline. I know I said that December 2023 looks a long ways away. Unfortunately, it is not. So right now, we're on that far left, which is outreach. Why I'm here now? It's gonna keep going till October, though. So, winter 2023, January is what's listed on here, is the goal for the administrative draft of the housing element. And the administrative draft will be released to the city and to the public. And that is a public review draft to be released 2023 and start soliciting initial public comment. It's 30 to 40 days, depending on if we get comments. And so we'll take the feedback from the city, from the citizens, all those things, and do another round of outreach with this. Bring that plan forward and say, all right, this is what we came... This is what the consultants came up with first, getting that initial feedback. And so that's winter of 2023, that initial draft and that first round of feedback. And then the goal is to submit to HCD late spring, early summer of 2023, in the April to June. And that, HCD has 90 days to turn it back to us. They're gonna say, you gotta make a bunch of changes, because they always say that. And then we will make those changes, resubmit to HCD August, September of 2023 for December 31st adoption. So, regional housing needs allocation. How is this determined? So first, we start with the state, and the state says, state of California needs 2.5 million units. And then the state goes to the council of governments, which are throughout the state. And here, we're the Fresno Council of Governments, Fresno COG. So Fresno COG was told Fresno needs 58,000 more units. And then the COG essentially uses a formula based on current population and future population growth to determine what the local RENA number is. And so for Colinga, we are at 556 units. Now, does the number have been assigned by the RENA? And that's 1% of the county's allocation. As y'all can see, Fresno has the lion's share. Fresno County has a good bit, as well does Clovis. So, you know, the bigger players in the county do have to... are responsible for building, for meeting the RENA numbers, but here in Colinga, 566 is the number we are thinking about. And so density. It's one of the big changes that a housing element requires, is that cities and counties must show that there's adequate land zoned to accommodate this RENA. So Sean mentioned, you're gonna see some zoning changes potentially that may come down the line. So here in Colinga, it is listed as a suburban jurisdiction, which, sure, we'll call it suburban, according to the state, and that is at 20 units per acre. So for the low-income portions of that RENA, the required density is 20 units per acre here in Colinga. And so strategies. How do these folks help determine how we're gonna try to meet these numbers? So we take those sites that they identified last time, fifth-cycle element. Take those, see, could we possibly use those? What's going on? What's the status of those? And then you start looking at site... you wanna focus on sites that are larger than about a half acre, smaller than 10 acres. That's what the state has decided. That's what's best for lower-income housing. And then, you know, going through a process of looking at vacant and under-use sites, considering, well, could ADUs help make up some of these numbers? And then also adding in those pipeline projects and specific plans. So if there are already things in the works, those can also be... Those can also be added in to meet your RENA numbers. All right. So key changes to state law. So, we first have AB 215, the big thing in this. It's really on HCD's end. It says, HCD now has a mandatory public review period for housing elements. It adds a 30-day minimum public review period, up to 40 days. It also extends HCD's review period. Well, it flips them from 60 to 90 for your draft, and then once you adopt it, the state now has 60 days to approve it. And then, yeah, deadline does not change on that one. Another phone one. AB 1398, it's the rezone timeframe. So after this housing element is approved, the jurisdiction will have 120 days to get in compliance with what the housing element says the zoning will be. So 120 days after the adoption of the housing element, the zoning must be in place. If it is not in place, the rezones must be completed within a year, and if not, compliance may be revoked. This is when the state starts getting a little ticky-tacky with, well, we might revoke things, we might do this. And then if the housing element is adopted more than one year from the element due date, the element cannot be found in compliance. So this is just one mechanism that the state's using to get those housing elements in on time. And then it also removes the four-year update consequence. If it's updated outside the 120-day guideline, that's a real ticky-tacky thing that the project manager will let you know if you gotta deal with. All right. So a few more. We got AB 72, it's accountability, it's HCD enforcement. It essentially gives HCD more power to revoke housing element compliance for failure to rezone. And HCD may report out-of-compliance jurisdictions to the Attorney General for violations of No Net Law Statute, Housing Accountability Act, Fair Housing Law. And so kind of giving some teeth to HCD. Next one, AB 1397, it's identification of realistic sites. It's essentially saying sites larger than half an acre, sorry. sorry, it's larger than 10 acres are presumed inadequate for lower-income housing unless, within the city, there's similar development happening. And, um, yeah. So that one, it's realistic sites, what can actually happen based on their observations. All right, finishing up, we got SB 166, it's no-net-loss zoning. So if a project is approved on a housing element with fewer units or a different income category, so cities must either find that other sites are adequate or they must make other sites available. And we'll get, that kind of gets involved when you start looking at identifying sites and density placements on that. SB 35, it applies if the number of building permits issued in a year, that says, okay, applies if the number of building permits issued is less than the share of the RENA by income category for the reporting period. So this one essentially means, um, I'll get into it later. It's, okay, SB 35, if, um, if the city doesn't approve enough building permits with the share of the RENA for the reporting period, HCD takes some mechanisms to keep difficult processes in place. All right, and I'll explain these other ones better, I'm sorry. So SB 330, it removes roadblocks for development. Um, this is basically, the big one on this is no subjective design standards. Um, you can't just say landscaping must be pretty. Pretty is very subjective term, we can't quantify pretty, you know? You can say, oh, we must have shrubs appropriate for the place, but, you know, just pretty landscaping, we can't really use that language anymore. And then AB 686, affirmatively furthering fair housing. So now housing elements have to consider fair housing issues within the process. So, you know, I guess identifying areas of opportunity, identifying access to resources throughout the city and county, um, identifying housing sites that foster equitable access to resources, not just putting an affordable housing site, you know, away from anything, in the middle of nowhere, not trying to do that. And then also, it requires jurisdictions to put programs in place to actually implement, uh, fair housing strategies. All right, and perhaps the most heard of this new state housing laws is SB 9. It's all about housing development approvals. So essentially what this does, the legislation allows for two units per lot with a potential of up to four units on single-family lots. So it allows for urban lot splits within jurisdictions if they do not require demolition or alteration of existing housing. And then what this does with us is that, um, it requires coordination with HCD to meet the RENA, and it is also analyzing how these units may be used to help meet that RENA. You know, how SB 9 units, how lot splits or ADUs can be used to help moderate and above-moderate income RENA numbers. So, I know I went through a lot of, muh, on that. And one other thing, we have one other presentation on October 4th? There's flyers over there. It was a community workshop for the housing element. So it's a much more interactive, much less, it's a much different, a little bit more fun presentation, and we want community input on that. We want to hear from the citizens, we want to hear from anyone and everyone about what are the housing needs and issues in the community. So study session, more for the officials, but the community workshop, it's y'all's time to come tell us what is up, because we think y'all know more than we do. So the flyers are there, we'd love to see anyone and everyone come talk, and we'll have snacks. So I'm turning back over to council, because I'm sure you all have questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. And planning commission.
Okay, council, do you guys have any questions? Right offhand? Uh, planning commission, council, uh, any questions?
Yes. So, I cannot predict the future. I wish I had a crystal ball. But, so typically, so the 30-day review period, if you do receive public comment, it goes up to 40. And it's not, does not have to be more than that. So, you know, it's one of those, public comment starts, say, September 15th, we will end it 40 days from there, and you cut it off there. And with public comment, I mean, it is what it is. If, you know, if someone wants to come in from an outside organization, we have to take that feedback. But, um, this is a housing element. For Colinga and for y'all, it's not for, you know, some outside advocate in Fresno to come in and start telling y'all to change things. So does that help at all? But it essentially just raises, it creates a public comment period, because previously there wasn't that requirement.
Then back to the graph.
Yes.
Back to the graph would be with how many units that Colinga has to have, that 566? We, planning commission has already seen that, and I don't remember. 566, that's a total amount of units we have to have, that's not all broken up?
Correct.
Yeah, it's all broken up into, from moderate, above moderate, all the way to extremely low. So that number is broken up into those different income categories.
And I can, I have that on my computer at work, and I'll send it to Sean, and he can send it out to y'all. So it is broken down typically with the current income levels of the community reflecting that. So typically, what you'll see is roughly 20% above moderate, 20% moderate, and then low and very low, just depending on that breakdown. But I'll send, I'll send Sean what the COG has most recently done, so I'm not telling you exact numbers, okay? Of course, yeah.
And basically, you stated that, uh, this isn't something that, I mean, we have to do this, but, uh, we don't have to comply to it, basically. I mean, if we don't have the people to come in and move in here, we don't, I mean, we do it as we can. It's like a blueprint.
Right, so I like to compare this, we're setting the groundwork. So say, if a developer came in and wanted to build that 566 units, great. The city could accommodate that with their current zoning. Um, but it is not a requirement for the city to build it. If, you know, we come in here eight years from now and there were zero units built, well, y'all did your zoning, you did your job. You're not, you did nothing wrong, you know? We're good to go. You know, the state doesn't get on folks for, well, you didn't build units. They'll get on folks, well, you didn't have the zoning to build those units. You didn't have this little thing. But in terms of the actual units built, they, you know, the state does understand that is very much out of y'all's control.
But if something happened and we got more than 566, that's fine, too.
Yeah, that is, that is great. Thankfully, it's not a binding number. It's just a binding zoning regulation, more or less.
Right, because I don't want to put the city in anything where it's not attainable, you know?
Right.
Hopefully, it is, but we don't want to go there if we don't have to, I mean. But we'll do what we have to do for the, uh, for the blueprints, basically.
Yeah, make the state happy, so we don't get the stick part of the carrot and stick that they like to use.
Right, right. I'm sorry, do you guys have any other questions?
I have a question. Um, kind of piggybacking on this one, you had mentioned something about, um, a certain number of applications needed to be approved? Um, can you explain more about that?
Yes. Can I get those slides back up?
Because that's kind of confusing me with what you mentioned there and what was just said.
Yes. All right, here, you, no, no, no. Okay. I'm going to get you a far better explanation than this right here, actually. Because, yeah, this does not explain it well at all. So, can I, I'm going to get that to Sean, and can he send it out? Because, yeah, that's, that is incredibly confusing.
Yeah, because if, if we have to have the zoning that's within the compliance so that we don't get dinged by the state, but if things are coming before us that are rejected because they, you know, the zoning's there, but for other reasons, they're not in compliance with other things, I would like to know if we are going to face consequences for not having passed as much as is, as is expected.
Yeah, and I, I did not explain that well, so I will, I'll give a better explanation via email as well. I'll probably just get the project manager to do it, she does a way better job, but that's okay. So, um, essentially, my understanding of SB 35 is if you meet their certain thresholds with this, it, it helps stream, they'll, HCD will help streamline a process for development, but, um, as it sits right now, I will get you a better explanation of this. I'm very sorry, because that is...
Well, and some of my, some of my understanding of it is basically, where, I mean, even a lot of this housing, a lot of these housing laws have come from arduous discretionary review and denials of these types of projects. So what the, what the state is doing, which is kind of piggybacking off of previous legislation, which is to make affordable housing projects ministerial, which means site plan review, which is non-conditional use permit, you know, non-discretionary type reviews. And so my understanding is, is basically, if you've got a ministerial approach to this already, I don't know what else the state's going to do. It's not going to force you to build it, because there's nothing they can do to force us to build the housing. It has to be market-driven. However, they can make sure that you're doing anything and everything to approve projects. If you approved every project that's being brought before you, then it's really difficult for the state to come in and say, hey, you're not building enough units. So it's really market-driven. And that, that conversation happens throughout these cycles. And, you know, when you get these big numbers for the RENA numbers, these, this is ultimately, you know, it's a number that's thrown out, and we're still going to do our, we're still going to do what we can do to bring housing to the, to Colinga. So, um, I don't know many jurisdictions that have been able to meet their RENA numbers, even in Fresno County, except I've been through three cycles now. Um, or this will be my third cycle, and I don't know who has met those numbers. So. Yeah, you're basically identifying high-density residential zoning areas. And the big challenge that can come up over the years is not having enough land that's zoned to be able to accommodate the, that, the development that you need. You can't use annexation to meet these, meet this criteria because of the process that we have in place for annexations. Um, one of the things that Clovis ran into, and they've had problems, is with having enough zoning in their existing city limits to accommodate the number of units that they've had to account for in the housing element, which requires you to go through a zoning exercise of rezoning properties, um, you know, that may or may not want to be rezoned. Well, that's going to fall under ADU, and that'll be something that we'll discuss as we go through with our ADU regulations in place, whether or not those can account for some of those units, um, when we look at that. So you have existing housing, you have existing infrastructure and neighborhoods that can accommodate some of that housing through the ADU regulations. And based on what we have in place, we may be able to include those units to offset having to do any rezone exercise for additional units. Not, not the element, not this housing element process, no.
566 is our target number for cycle six, right?
Correct.
What is our current number for cycle five, do you know?
I do not.
Give me a second, I'll get, I'll look it up.
Okay.
Okay.
And also, this spate of legislation, does this reflect a certain, any kind of change in perspective from Sacramento relative to local control of our land use?
Right. So, I'm trying to, I'll speak from HCD's perspective.
Okay.
Part of these changes are HCD has realized for far too long. Folks have just put housing elements out and just not done anything with them or about them. So part of these state legislations come from essentially HCD beefing up their stick part of the carrot and stick model that they've used for so long. So part of it is HCD wants more housing. Part of it is the state of California has identified, we have a need to, for more housing. So I think part of, part of the state law changes are that. And then the local control issue has come up a lot, because, I mean, y'all care about your community. This is y'all's community, this is not the state's community. And so I don't know if I have enough perspective or can really speak on the local control issue, because I know SB 9 was viewed in a lot of ways as taking away local control. So I feel like I did not answer that question at all, but...
Yeah, you kind of did. Yeah, you did. There are a couple, like SB 6 right now, and AB 2011, I think, are on the governor's desk.
Not been signed, but they're...
Right.
On his desk.
Can you speak to those at all, or not?
Not, if I had not been up for 12 hours, I totally would. Um, but I, I don't know enough about them, and they don't affect the housing element process, thankfully.
Okay.
So it's kind of out of my purview for now.
Okay. And then, um, at some point, you indicated in one of, in the discussion of one of the bills, that, um, something about identifying policies that impede the ability to create housing.
Yes.
And that was like...
Yeah, so that's part of the local housing constraints analysis, as well as, um, the county does that as well.
Okay, so besides policy, is there anything else that would, that would be construed as a constraint? For example, particularly now in our community, water is a big issue. So we may not have a policy that addresses something, but if we have physical issues that need to be addressed, would that fall under that constraint assessment?
Yes, because it, I mean, it's not, you know, drought is not a policy, but it is an issue we're facing. You know, it's California, this is where we're at. Um, so we'll be listed on constraints, you know, whether it be an environmental constraint, like some places in more, you know, kind of east of Fresno, one of theirs is they don't have land to accommodate zoning. You know, that's a constraint in their area. But, you know, with y'all, with Colinga, one of them might be, the state owns a lot of land in Colinga that the city can't do anything with. That is a constraint to building here.
Okay.
You know, so it, it's not just the policies that constrain. It can be, you know, water availability. It can be, you know, the, the fact of Colinga, it can be hard to attract residents here, things like that. So it isn't just an examination of all the policies by the city. It's kind of a holistic of, well, this is our situation. How is it we've come to arrive here? So, you know, they take a holistic response, a holistic view, because, I mean, housing touches every aspect of the city, environmental, sewer water. And to be honest, unless you have water, how are you going to have a house?
Michelle, our current RENA is 589. And to date, we have, we've, uh, we have 261 units that have been built since 2015, which is the cycle five, so 2015 to 2023.
Do you have any more questions from the planning commission? Counsel, do you have any more? Could, could you take any from the audience if they have one? Anybody from the audience have one? Okay, thank you.
Audience, grab a flyer, and I hope to see you in a couple weeks. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to, uh, number four, public hearing. Thank, yes. Continue public hearing for the introduction and waiving of the first reading of ordinance number 853, City Initiated Zoning Text Amendment, uh, number ZTA 20201, Amending the Planning and Zoning Code Related to Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs, Flood Pain Regulations, and Density Bonus. Sean?
Thank you, mayor and council. This, uh, this item is pretty much identical to last meeting's agenda, because we made a couple changes regarding conversions of garages. Um, and so those changes were made on the previous agenda, or on, on, on this agenda, discussed at the last agenda. So those changes that were discussed are included in this. So at this point, I'll just, uh, if the council has any further questions, there's not really any changes from the last meeting and the discussions that occurred. So this will be the formal introduction and waiving of the first reading. The public hearing's been continued, but this will allow it to move forward to the next meeting for, um, second read and adoption.
Counsel, do you have any questions before we start the public hearing? Planning commission, do you have any questions? Planning commission, do you have any questions for him before we start? Okay. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody who would like to talk on this subject at all? Nathan?
All right, so, this is absolutely an attack on local zoning authority. It's horrible, you're going to be turning singles, single zoned residence areas into multiple. I don't even know how that fits with the general plan, how that's legal, except for the fact that the state has decided it is. You don't have to vote for it, you could say no. I just attended a meeting in Clovis, where a lady running for city council in Clovis said, there's, you know, there's really three things that can happen. You can either, one, roll over and do what the state wants, you can, two, you can fight it, which costs some money, or three, you can do nothing. And doing nothing buys you time. They haven't talked about consequences to deal with this yet. You, you don't have to pass this tonight, there's three of you, we only need one person to vote no, and this doesn't move forward. And you won't have garages filled with people, with your neighbors, you won't have extra cars outside of your houses that you don't normally have. We already have a problem with that. Have you guys, I know, I know that you guys live in the neighborhoods I live in, we already have a problem with parking, and this is just going to make it worse. And I disagree with this, with the state on this, and you guys have a choice right now. You can stand up for the citizens, I know none of you is getting as happy with this, so if you're not happy with it, don't vote for it, say no. That's what I would do. People ask me, what would you do? You always just attack the council. Well, I'd vote no, that's what I would do. I'd vote no, and I'd say, come back with better options, and if there are no better options, you just wait it out, and you make sure, you know, and the state, amazingly enough, if enough people waited out, sometimes they change. That's, that's your ability, you have the ability as a council to say no. You do, you have that ability, you can stick up for the public, and you can say, I don't want to do this. But if you do it, you're just saying to the state, you know what, whatever you shove down our throats, we're going to say yes to. I'm telling you, you do not have to do this, and I urge you not to, for the sake of our city, please vote no. We don't want people living in the garage next door to us, this is going to affect everyone citywide. Please vote no, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan, anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Okay, do we need to vote on this tonight? It's just, or is it just a public hearing?
No.
No, so the action requested is to waive the reading and move to the second reading.
So it'll be, it'll come back to us again too, though.
For a second reading, yes, yeah. So you do need to close the public hearing.
Okay, what, okay, but what happens if, if somebody does vote no, and it doesn't pass? Will we still have a second reading? We won't, will we?
You will not.
Right.
But, but I would, I would add, so this is, it's already a state law.
Right.
And so if somebody wants to come and build a second dwelling, whether you change the ordinance or not, they would be entitled to do that.
Right.
But you, but you do not, if you vote, if somebody voted no for it, we basically look for direction at some point, you know, do you want us to bring this back to you or not?
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, what would you like to do?
I don't know if Adam or Manny had any input into this as to yea or nay. I would rather the five of us be here.
So we, we could actually, we could actually table this.
Could we table it?
Yes.
Right. The, the, the public hearing portion would be closed.
Right.
But the discussion and action, you could table until the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, motion table it.
And then if we, if we actually did that, could we have the, the second meeting at the same time? You know?
The second reading?
The second reading.
No, you cannot. It would be the following.
No, 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 I mean, if we voted to table it, and then we, we tabled to the next meeting, could we do the second reading at that same time? Since we don't have a public hearing?
No, you, you wouldn't have another public hearing, but the ordinances require that you have two separate readings and at least five days between them. So you can't have the first and a second right after another.
Okay, what would you guys like to do?
My motion was to table it.
Yeah, I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
And Mayor Ramsey.
I'll just go ahead and vote aye. Okay, next, we'll go to consent calendar. We have 12 items. I have a, a problem on, I'm related to the person on number 12, so I'm going to not vote on number 12. Is there anything that you guys like to pull?
So that would, that will cause, well...
Oh, that's right.
If you're recusing, yeah, if you're recusing yourself, we won't have a quorum for that one. And so that one, is there, is there a timeline on that, for a particular timeline for that to get?
I don't know.
Mercedes might be on.
But...
If she knows.
I believe Adam is trying to get here, and is close. I don't know if you can pull that one and...
We can hold that one until later, and then we can go ahead and vote for the, the regular agenda.
Oh, he has got her. Y'all can move forward now.
So mayor, you could go ahead and, if there was a motion for one through 11, and then you can recuse yourself on, on 12. Oh, I'm sorry, was 12 the, the one you had?
Yeah, number 12, yeah. Is there anything anybody would like to also pull, though? Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar for one through 11.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye. Okay, we'll go to item number 12. Anybody like to make a motion on that one?
And mayor, if you're going to, if you have a, if you're recusing yourself, then you'll have to go into the back, and then vice mayor, you're up.
Appreciate that, Ron. Number 12. All right, fellas, any motions on this one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve AZERID.
To approve what?
Number 12, item number five on the consent calendar, number 12.
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
I also vote aye. And at this time, we're going to leave Ron in the closet, we're just going to keep rolling through.
We'll go to item number six? No, I'm sorry.
Round seven.
Number seven, okay. City managers' announcements?
I have just one, I, I did want to update everyone, I know that the last council meeting, we talked about moving watering days to Monday, that letter is en route. Takes a little while to get those processed in the mail, I know folks received their utility bills with the prior watering days on it, so to try to stifle some of the confusion that all watering should occur on Mondays, but all other restrictions still apply. So it's still no watering of front yard turf, you can water your, your front plants, but just the turf cannot be watered. But just want to provide that clarity, so folks will probably receiving that, I talked to Larry today, probably the next day or so, they should be receiving the letter that we talked about flushing and talking about the, kind of compiling those watering days to try and move water through the system. Other than that, that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Any council member reports? I have no announcements.
Your microphone, Ron? Microphone?
Well, Larry has one.
Your mic is muted.
Oh, your mic is muted.
Okay. Future agenda items?
Yeah, I got a couple. The fire extinguisher companies that we use, is there any way that we can do a comparison with the local company that we have here versus the one that we're actually using?
Anything else?
The trees in front of the museum, whose responsibility is that?
In front of where?
In front of the museum.
Oh, in front of the museum?
Yes.
I think the city waters them, and we put them in, but it was, it's, yes.
There's, there's one that's, there's one that's dead, second from the corner on Elm, that, it looked like it just never sprouted, it never started to grow, and it's dead.
Oh, that's the one that they replaced.
That's for Al Cady family?
Is that the one that they replaced, and there was a stump, they didn't get the stump completely out of the old one?
The one in the corner.
Oh, that was in the corner?
Yeah.
There's one next to it.
Okay.
Okay, because I, I remember there was a stump, and they tried to build it up so it could go around it and stuff. I, I remember Tim talking to me about that. We, we probably have somebody look at it, so.
We can look at it.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, we have no closed sessions. Thank you guys for coming, thanks to planning commission for coming, hopefully we can do this again sometime. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.